Order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Prior to tonight's public meeting, the board met in executive session to discuss personnel matters and information that if discussed in public would lead to disclosure of confidential information or information protected by law. The board also discussed with council information and strategy related to pending tax assessment litigation matters. Mrs. Newsick, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Dad.
Here.
Ms. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Hamilton.
Here.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Here.
Mrs. Lynch. Ms. Zich.
Here.
Eight members present, Mrs. Lynch absent.
Thank you. Dr. Reljack, do we have any guests this evening?
We do have some guests this evening. My, first, I'd like to introduce Deputy Superintendent Dr. David McCommins, who's here to present a Leading Now honor and to introduce also our award-winning communications team. So, Dr. McCommins.
Thank you, Dr. Reljack. Good evening, everyone. It's my honor this evening to recognize our superintendent, Dr. Mary Catherine Reljack, the Fox Chapel area school district. Dr. Mary Catherine Reljack has been named the recipient of the first-ever Reflective Leadership Award from Leading Now, a nationwide organization that supports superintendents in navigating political complexity and strengthening public trust. The award is given to a school leader who leads with clarity, purpose, and courage to pause and go deeper. The Reflective Leadership Award is one of three inaugural Public Trust Awards. Leading Now believes that high-impact superintendents draw from three dimensions of leadership, of the three, the leadership triangle, responsive, proactive, and reflective. These leaders exemplify each trait while also modeling strengths across the full spectrum. The goal of Leading Now is to provide superintendents with a diverse community, access to experts, and practical resources to enable them to focus on what really matters most, student opportunities and outcomes. The award was presented during the Leading Now Professional Learning Summer Gathering in July of 2025. Congratulations, Dr. Reljack.
Thank you.
And before we move on to our next recognition, I'd also like to say hello to Mr. and Mrs. Rankin. Dr. Reljack's mom and dad tune into almost every board meeting, and I would just like to say to them, I've known Mary Catherine as a colleague for about 20 years now, and I've been fortunate enough to work with her for the last six years. And to her parents, I would say, you should be very proud of who she is as a leader, but be even more proud of who she is as a person. So, you've done a wonderful job raising this wonderful young lady.
Thank you.
And my last little note, I would also say it is a big month in the Reljack-Rankin family. This month of August, Dr. Reljack will be celebrating a birthday, as well as her mom and dad will be celebrating in about two weeks their birthday. So, happy birthday to them also. All right. And now, well, first of all, Dr. Reljack.
Oh, thank you. Should she get up and shake all of our hands?
And I'd also like to recognize this evening our communications team. When this Board of Directors came on about six years ago, one of the things that they challenged Dr. Reljack was to move communication across the district. And Dr. Reljack, in turn, charged the communications team, which is Dr. Collette, Bonnie Brzezinski, and Jill Leonard, to make an impact. And tonight, I'm honored to recognize two communication team members, Ms. Bonnie Brzezinski and Jill Leonard, to celebrate the dozens, yes, dozens, of awards they won this year, not only at a state level, but also at a national level. What's remarkable about these recognitions is that they encompass nearly every aspect of communications, from writing to magazine work, graphic design, and photography. They are, we are incredibly fortunate at Fox Chapel area to have this team supporting our students, staff, and families. Their skill set complement one another perfectly, and we are better at Fox Chapel area because of them. Thank you, Bonnie, for your attention to detail, superior organization, and vast institutional knowledge. Jill, thank you for your tenacious problem-solving, never saying no, and for the invaluable role you play as our technology team assisting our middle-school students and supporting our families, especially at this time of year. I want to close by saying thank you. At Fox Chapel area, we often say we're better together, and that's certainly applicable sentiment for you to be part of our team. Bonnie and Jill, could you come on up?
Thank you, Dr. Reljack.
Thank you, Dr. McCommins, and congratulations to Ms. Brzezinski and Ms. Leonard. We do know that they are integral to our success and to getting our story out. And I think the thing that I should say is that they never say no, but they do use red pens well. So, they never say no, though. Next, I would like to invite some of our staff members and administrator to talk about our lens on learning. I guess that's actually in the next section, so maybe I will wait until you're ready to go there, unless you would like me to continue, Ms. Lynch.
I think we're ready.
All right.
I don't think we have the student council ready since the school hasn't started yet, so.
We do not. I didn't mean to jump-start that, but we'll move on.
That's okay. Just keep on going.
So, our lens on learning is, today is, we have a number of staff members. We have Becky Grisbeck, the program facilitator of the Elementary Summer Learning Academy, along with our district's Executive Director of Secondary Education and Instruction, Dr. Matthew Patterson. And they are both here to showcase our Summer Learning Academy, which took place during the month of July. They are also joined by one of our Summer Learning Academy teachers, Ms. Monica Greluski, who will share some reflections about her experience working with our students this summer. So, I'm going to turn it over to our team.
Hi, everyone. As Dr. Reljack said, my name is Becky Grisbeck, and I served as the Summer Learning Academy Program Coordinator for the elementary level this summer. Our program took place from July 1st to July 31st, and our program's theme was "A Sense of Place." The goals and philosophies of our Summer Learning Academy program are mirrored by a typical goals and philosophies of an elementary classroom during the school year. They are to support our students with academic support in ELA and math, to provide direct instruction and guided practice aligned to PA Core ELA and math standards, to provide small-group instruction and individualized tasks, to boost student confidence and motivation levels through personalized experiences, to enhance learning through community partnerships, and to show growth through pre- and post-assessment. Our program ran on a very tight schedule. From July 1st to 31st, students engaged in two instructional blocks daily with a focus in reading and mathematics instruction. At the end of each day, the students were provided a grab-and-go lunch. We also partnered with the Backpack for Hunger organization to send food home to families in need for the weekends as well. We were very fortunate to have an amazing lineup of staff during our summer program this year, and we had about 140 students participate with us. We were also able to partner with the University of Pittsburgh this year in their MAT program. Those students were able to come into classrooms and observe what the function of a room is like during a session. There were also some supports for our students' social and emotional learning. We did this by utilizing a weekly theme and instructing that theme using mindful morning quick checks, daily mindfulness quotes, and also little brain breaks that the students loved. So, as I said earlier, our program theme was "A Sense of Place." We engaged in this by partnering with the Audubon Society, who this year provided and put an emphasis on community and sustainability. Each week had a theme, the elementary folks love a theme, as you can see, there's a pattern there. And we had four different themes each week. The first theme was "Where We Are: A Sense of Place." So, the students were engaging with maps and learning about the world around them. Week two's theme was "Beneath Our Feet: Soil and Forest Floor Investigations." So, students were going outside and doing those investigations with their group leaders. Week three's theme was "We All Need Trees." Students got to study and investigate the different types of trees that are in our community. And finally, week four, which was my personal favorite, our theme was "Helping Our Community Grow." We took our students on a field trip to Hardy Valley Park, where they engaged in planting trees in our community. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Monica, and she's going to talk about instruction.
Hello, everyone. In our primary grades, students continued their phonics work using Foundations Ready to Rise, a program specifically designed for summer review and reinforcement. As shown in the photos, students engage in hands-on activities, such as building words, manipulating letter tiles, marking up words to demonstrate understanding, and applying their knowledge through decodable text. These activities help solidify foundational literacy skills in an engaging and interactive way. Upper elementary students focus on word study through syllable work, comprehension exercises, and written responses to texts. The photos highlight students participating in Sill Search and using evidence-based strategies to cite textual evidence, an essential skill for developing deeper reading comprehension and analytical thinking. Our math instruction was guided by Summer Impact, a curriculum specifically designed for summer learning. During the math block, students engaged with manipulatives to build conceptual understanding, solved problems using a variety of visual models, and regularly communicated their mathematical thinking with peers and educators. These activities supported both skill development and mathematical reasoning in a collaborative environment.
On behalf of the elementary team, we just wanted to thank you for providing us the opportunity to run this program this summer. It's very special for our students, staff, and community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to just speak on the secondary program, unless I'm being told to exit. She did tell me we'd have a signal, but. So, our emphasis this year for our secondary program was to expand the opportunities for additional students to participate, and we were able to do that. So, our program goals were to provide students in need of support in ELA, math, and English language development. We also wanted to have a program that creates academic value, both in ELA and math, a program that promotes skill application through engineering, and a program that supports the ESL students, both kindergarten, elementary, and secondary. So, this year, we were really focused on not only teacher recommendation for the program, but also looking at available data that we had. Data from our STAR assessments, data from PSSA assessments, and projection data for students going forward. So, we identified four different priorities for students to try to capture as many students that were potentially in need or would benefit from support over the summer. So, for example, our Priority One students were invited first. These were students who met the data criteria for math and reading, were recommended by their teacher, and they would receive the invitation first. A period of time would pass, we'd remind them, and then open up for the next priority. And we did that for about a month and a half to try to capture the most needy students first before we opened it up to students who still could benefit from the program, but not as much as in need as our Priority One students. So, we sent out altogether 269 invitations to students over about a month and a half period. We registered 62 students just in the SLA piece of this, another 16 or so students registered for the secondary ESL program, and about the same number for the elementary program. And for the most part, we were able to capture Priority One and Two students who attended on a regular basis. We had an excellent team this year. It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of joy to work with this experienced team. Many of these educators are with us throughout the school year. We were able to add a health and phys ed component this year, so students had opportunities for movement and exercise. But we were really pleased with the staff participation we had and very appreciative of their efforts. They came to work every day. They made it fun for students, and it was very enjoyable to be with them. So, the programming piece of this was a little different than what's been done in the past. So, as I mentioned earlier, the emphasis was on identifying the right students for the program, making sure that we had data that said these students needed the support. But then, we also used data from NWE MAP, which was a pre- and post-assessment that provided personalized learning pathways for each student in programs that we're using in the district on a regular basis, both Read 180 and Math 180. So, we had professional development for those folks, and the students were familiar with those programs as well, because they are also used on a day-to-day basis, and we know they work for students. The English as an elementary, elementary English is a second-language program. This was taught by Amy Meyer, one of our elementary teachers, did a phenomenal job with students. We had 17 students invited, 16 students registered, and many of those students came every day. Their focus was on language acquisition, just experiences with the English language, but also those early literacy skills needed to lift words off of the page. They worked on math and science and had small-group instruction every day. Our secondary English language program was new this year. Through our ESL symposium that we had back in February, we met the folks from Arise, who offered the Pittsburgh Refugee Youth Summer Enrichment Program, which is Prize, and held 10 seats for Fox Chapel area students. We took 14 seats and sent students there every day to their program. And this program is five weeks, hosted on the University of Pitt's Oakland campus, serves about 80 to 100 or 120 students from all across our region who are immigrant and refugee students. And these are opportunities for students to develop literacy skills, but a lot of social-emotional development skills, skills as well, but also fun and being able to connect with other students who are in the same situation. And I actually had an opportunity to spend some time with those students, and it was absolute joy. There were students from all over the world there, and our students were shining very brightly. A lot of good smiles that day. So, that is it for us. Again, thank you for your support. We are very happy with where we are. We'll continue to expand our recruitment efforts and refine the program to try to hit as many students as we can and making sure that what we're offering them is meaningful and worthwhile. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do any of our board members have questions about our summer learning?
I do. Yes. So, I like that your recruitment strategy is tiered and responsive to student achievement. How does that, doesn't, I assume that narrows the window for recruitment considerably, because you're probably waiting for assessment data towards the end of the year? Like, what is the window of recruitment?
We actually had plenty of data on hand already. So, we started collecting data in early, early in January. We had good averages of where students were, had been. We'd already looked at their past state assessment performance. We already knew what their projected state assessment performance was. So, we really were able to make those decisions in January and then start to recruit. I want to say we started recruiting in March, April, somewhere in that area. We'll start even earlier this, this next year.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Were those elementary curriculums, ones that have been used in the past? I don't think I've heard them mentioned before. The elementary curriculums, like Foundations for Summer, were those ones used in previous years?
Yes. Foundations has been around before.
Well, it was a particular summertime pack, not just.
Oh, because Summer Impact was implemented two years ago.
Okay. And what was the math one?
At the secondary?
No, elementary.
It was also Summer Impact.
Okay.
They both came from this office learning company.
I'm very excited about the English Language Learners Program that you implemented, and I commend you. I think that's great and hope that we will continue on that path.
Thank you. We were really pleased to be able to do that and provide that. I want to thank Mr. Breckfritz and his team, they arranged transportation. We know that that was a barrier, even though our families had access through the Prize Academy to public transportation. We wanted them on our buses with our drivers, make sure they got there safely and back, and that helped remove a barrier for a lot of our students. And there was a Saturday event that we bused our families to as well.
Oh, great.
So, we've explored opportunities throughout the future with Prize and the University of Pitt into talking about students that may not be seeing themselves at this moment in time as college-bound or career-bound.
Right.
So, some really good things came out of that.
Yeah. You're, you're giving them so many opportunities just with this one program, so thank you so much.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great week.
Okay. So, that concludes our lens of on learning. But next, we, I would like to introduce Mr. Ben Skelton. Benjamin A. Skelton is the President of Cyclone Energy Group, and Cyclone Energy Group completed a facility condition assessment and a master plan for our district. And Mr. Skelton is here to present that to the board and answer any questions, so I will turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
It's a real honor to be here. Thank you to the board for selecting our firm to perform this. Really enjoyed getting to learn the district and all the history of all the buildings. Especially like to thank Mr. Breckfritz for all his support over the last year as we collected volumes and volumes of data and sifted through nearly 100 years' worth of facility information on lots of different things here. So, it's been great to learn it and a great team to work with. And I do want to commend the staff here. My background, I started working in school design. I'm a mechanical engineer. And I've been to hundreds of schools and worked with lots and lots of districts in my career. And by far, this is the best district I've ever seen as far as the quality of the maintenance and the upkeep on facilities and just the care for the job that they're doing on it. So, I commend everybody on your team for a great job. So, I'm excited to present what we, what we've discovered here.
Don't, don't mind the marching band.
It's Band Camp.
It's okay. It's a good leading.
We're getting some accompanying music.
Speaking of the mic. Yeah, let me put that up a little higher, higher for you. Is that better? Just briefly introduce you, this is the team from my team that worked on the project here. We have a very talented group of architects and engineers that go through data all the time, run lots of models and analysis. that go through data all the time, run lots of models and analysis, and spend a lot of time working on this project. So just a brief overview of the scope. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, we looked at four schools in the Field House. We did the high school, the middle school, Fairview and O'Hara. We excluded Kerr and we excluded Hartwood because Hartwood was having a major renovation done, and Kerr was more or less recently built. So those were excluded from the detailed analysis. I will say I did tour and work with Kerr back in April of this, last year, helping diagnose some issues that the building had with some persistence, persistent issues with the chiller plant since it got built. So I did get some eyes on that system, and things look good there now. Again, some of you may not know the whole history of the district, but we spent hours and hours going through drawings and plans and details, and wanted to just kind of put up there like each year that the schools were built. So a lot of it was built in the 60s, even the 50s, and have been renovated and renovated since. Kerr, obviously being new in 2019, kind of the outlier there. So I'm going to give just a kind of an overview example of how schools typically come together. And the high school here is a great example of that, how things come together over time. So that long period of since 1961 to 63, when the building was designed and built, this was the original structure. And this may not mean a whole lot to you, but this, you'll kind of see it come together here. In late 1960s, there was a classroom addition that got added at the top, on top right. The cafeteria is kind of the, expanded in the middle there. And then 1986 to 89, they added the courtyard feature here and some more little, little parts and pieces, but it wasn't as substantial. Mostly, it was a renovation. So I found these drawings when we were going through, and I thought it was really cool to kind of show you just how the artist rendered this for people like yourself. They were sitting in a board meeting in 1986, presenting this to you, saying, "This is what your school's going to look like." So this at the time was what the commons was. This is what they called the art node. This is the library. I thought that was pretty, pretty artistic. I'm an engineer, I can't draw. I can do numbers and spreadsheets. I can't do that. I think that's amazing. And this is the auxiliary building or the Field House. So that was all done right there in the 19, late 1980s. And then 2000, 2001 was a real substantial addition to it. There was auxiliary gym, there was arts, there was math and music places. I believe there's some laboratory work that was done there as well. And then 2016 to 2017 was the high school's most recent substantial renovation, where there was a lot of classroom work, major infrastructure to the heating and cooling systems of the building were done. The point of all of this is that since the 1960s till now, some of that stuff still exists from the 1960s. Some of it still exists from the 1970s, the 80s, 90s, and the 2000s. So the facilities team here has to work with a variety of equipment. Not everything's new, not everything's perfect, and even the new stuff doesn't work necessarily as good as some of the old stuff does. And that's typical with any type of construction. One other point to make here is like when we look at the 2016, 17 renovation, when this happened in some of the other schools, the heating plant, for example, was updated, but they left the boilers that were, you know, 20 years old. And so the, while the main infrastructure for the building was updated, the main physical plant for it is still really old and antiquated. And so you end up with this kind of mixture, like I said, really old and really new. So what we looked at as far as trying to digest all this information and make it something actionable was to try to put kind of a roadmap together of how this could be improved over time by not just replacing things and parts and pieces for like-for-like, but actually looking at it more holistically. How can we improve the district as a whole going forward? How can we build it for success with future renovations? So it's not a big, a big deal to change things up. And that kind of starts with understanding where we are today and what we think things are going to look like in the future. So we built this around decarbonization, which is a good way to look at things because it's not only just looking at how you use energy, but it's also looking at, you know, how you use energy on your site and how you purchase energy from electric providers, but it also provides a good roadmap. And it can be done with cost as a basis as well as environmental impact, long-term. The first step in any kind of evaluation, no matter what it is, we design net-zero buildings, and everybody says, "Go put solar panels on it and you're done." Now, the first thing we do is let's make the building as efficient as possible. When we have an existing building, that can be challenging because we're, again, dealing with existing equipment, new equipment, mixed equipment. We want to take what you have and make it as efficient as possible, replace what you have with something that's as efficient as possible, and set the groundwork for it. That could be making windows more energy-efficient, making insulation properties in the building better so that when we do renovations, the equipment that we're putting in is more right-sized. It's not oversized. It can be more energy-efficient. And if it's more, if we're addressing the load by putting more insulation on, we're actually going to be putting in smaller equipment, less costly equipment. The next part of this is going to be looking at, how do we look for the future? You know, if we're going to look at trying to decarbonize, that means getting rid of fossil fuel burning sources on the campuses throughout the facilities. So how do we look at electrification? And then the final part after we do that is how do we generate energy onsite? Or how do we at least purchase that or have a means for offsetting what we're using? This is all in the report that we sent to the, to the board here, but the, the plan comes in three phases. It's a continuous plan, by the way. The phase one, phase two, phase three, you're constantly kind of reinventing and repeating that. But this is just some framework for helping. The previous folks could help with some of the metrics and the math and the engineering in their curriculum, I think, because we want to establish like a baseline for the buildings first. That's, the first step is to understand where we're at. So we don't, we can't manage what we don't know. So we looked at this from energy and emissions, how you get your building energy supplied, how efficient are your buildings? And we like to also look at engagement and policy. We don't want this to be, I actually hate doing audit reports because they go on a shelf and they gather dust, and nobody ever does anything. I'm really proud of what our firm does because we do actionable things and we help people follow through with those actions. But you have to have some commitment on your side to do that. So we put some engagement and policy parts there. We listed some actions, the goals that go with that, and then the metrics you can use to maintain these goals over time. The first step was to benchmark the properties, and that is to understand how you use energy today. And so we looked at each facility. This is just a combination of all the different schools. I know it's a little bit hard to read in the eye chart, but there's the different schools. But you can't guess which one uses the most energy. This is electricity. This is the high school here that we're in. And then everything else is a much smaller facility for the most part, and they use relatively similar energy. This is from the calendar year 2024. And the same thing for natural gas. As we look at this, if the months here at the bottom, this is winter, summer, winter. When we're looking at data like this as engineers, we're saying, "Well, what's an anomaly here? What doesn't make sense? What shouldn't be there?" And, you know, we say, "Well, why is there a lot of natural gas consumption in the summer?" And we see it goes down, but it's still about a third of what it was last winter. Why is that there? And we look at that and try to identify what inefficiencies are causing that. And in this case, it's mostly because we're using reheat coils in buildings that are partially occupied, but they're occupied in the summer. And then we're making domestic hot water that nobody's really using. So there's some waste streams that we're trying to identify through this process. What we do is normalize your gas and electric utilities in common units, or common metric to kind of show what you're using more of. By and large, the top is your natural gas consumption in the orange. Whoops, giving away the punchline. The orange top is the natural gas. Electricity is the bottom line. So you're about 67% on average, natural gas-consuming. So when we look at decarbonization, there's things called Scope 1, Scope 2, and Scope 3. That's how we classify it. Scope 1 are things where you're looking at your site, where your facility is, and what kind of carbon emissions do you have there? That's from direct firing, burning of fossil fuels. Natural gas with some diesel and some gasoline is, are your three major Scope 1 emissions. Scope 2 emissions are things that come from the grid. So the electricity source that you're sourcing your energy from, what's its mix of renewable versus carbon-rich? So we put these in common metrics because your Scope 1 is going to be in orange there. We want to try to reduce that as much as possible. Plus, it's going to save you money. Now, when we put this in cost metrics, you see why you have natural gas onsite. Natural gas is much less expensive. And this is, this is just, it's market-based things, right? Your electricity, you purchase through a consortium. Your natural gas, you're purchasing from the utility. The, the units that I just showed before, by cost, one unit of electricity is one-fourth of the cost of one unit of natural gas. So you can use four times as much natural gas as far as a unit per energy to, by cost, to get to the electric number. So electric's going to win out and be, you know, or natural gas is going to win out as your heat source because it's going to cost a lot less, at least right now it is. When we benchmark the buildings, we put everything into a platform called Energy Star Portfolio Manager, which is administered by the United States EPA. And this is a thing that allows us to compare your schools to other schools of similar size, use, and function in the same climate area. It doesn't say that it's, you know, the Catholic school down the street. It doesn't give you that kind of level of detail, but that information gets kind of baked in, into the data. And it gives you a bell curve of 0 to 100, where, you know, 100 is your best, 0 is your worst, and anywhere from 25 to 75 is a pretty happy place to be. You can see here the Energy Star scores rank pretty low. I want to make sure this is pointed out that this is not a representation of how the equipment here is operated. It's not a representation of maintenance or lack of maintenance or lack of care. This is very much a sign that this facilities team is handcuffed and does not have the ability to control the energy consumption of these buildings. And that's what we saw predominantly through our evaluation is that there's a combination of old obsolete equipment that is very wasteful, that didn't get replaced in previous renovations, as well as the control systems that control that equipment are very limited to just control main plant systems, but not the ancillary things downstream that actually control the main systems. So they don't have a lot of visibility to see when something's not working. They don't have the ability to, to make a lot of changes, to control things, to be more efficient and save energy or set things back without causing comfort issues. So what we did to try to give you some sense of like, what could happen if we could make some improvements on these scores? What would it take to get to a score of 50? Or a score of 75 on this? Score of 75 is certifiable, is like a high-performance building. It actually doesn't take that much. In most of the schools, it was no more than, you know, 30% energy savings, which I know sounds like a lot, but it's really not when we look at the systems that you have in the different buildings. And then we put some cost to that, what you would actually get in a cost reduction in today dollars based on what you're paying in bills in this column. So for instance, if we were to save 20% at Fox Chapel High School, it's going to save this school $170,000 per year. That's pretty real money. And then across all of these other ones, it gets more. But even though it's a 40% savings in energy, gas and electric only, is $265,000 a year. These are very attainable percentage savings. And so this is kind of looking at the phasing plan that we're presenting right now and what, you know, that looks like. So in the phase one that I'm presenting, where we're just looking at some of the upgrades, 20% is a very reasonable savings target based on what we found. 40% with some more major renovation stuff. And then once you kind of get past that, you're looking at how do we make big future changes? How do we electrify? How do we generate power onsite, things of that nature? We put things into a carbon footprint to, to help evaluate if these numbers don't mean a lot. So we put an equivalency column here to kind of give you some kind of scale of how much carbon is actually being used onsite and purchased through the utility grid. And so the high school's a great example because it's a big number. But, you know, this equivalency is the same as driving a car, 7.5 million miles per year is what just this school uses in carbon emissions. It's a big number. So the carbon accounting is phase one. We got to know what you have. Same with the energy benchmarking. They're all really the same thing. They're actually calculated the same. We're not talking necessarily about embodied carbon, so that's the carbon that goes into the materials, the products, and actually physically building the building. In the lifecycle of a building, that the embodied carbon is actually the most carbon the building will ever use. To build that building and tear it down is the most. The operational carbon, which is the electricity and gas use, doesn't compare to that. It's much smaller number. So the longer you can keep a school in service and run it effectively and efficiently and keep your operational carbon down, you're actually helping with your decarbonization plan. And then transportation does count into that. The district doesn't have a lot of owned vehicles or anything like that, but we did put that in the report, some recommendations. But once you've kind of done that, like I said, you reduce, get energy-efficient. The positive impacts are onsite renewable energy or some kind of carbon offset, which is something that will not happen here. It's something that's usually purchased. And if you want to get to zero, you have to, have to have that offset. So key findings across the district. I talked about the facilities team being handcuffed, and they really are. The building automation system here is obsolete. It's poorly functional, has failed many times just since I've been here in July. There's been serious issues with it. So they really can't do anything other than try to just let it do its thing so things don't fail. And that's not the way it should be. And they have a lack of visibility of approximately 90% of the equipment in this building alone. So that's, that's a big, big deficit. It's really hard to operate something when you can't see it. And again, the little things, the little devices that control each individual room are the ones that we don't see. And that's telling what the main systems are supposed to be doing. So if one of those goes bad, we're never going to know it's a problem until a teacher complains or someone says there's no air conditioning, and it's going to make the equipment wasteful. So our primary recommendation, this is a place to get huge savings right away because once you take control of your building, the equipment's functional, it works. We just can't tell it what to do. There's obvious things like lighting. Everybody's kind of familiar with LED lighting. This is not LED. This is T8. And in most classrooms that we went through were T8 lighting. There's some T12 lighting and even some incandescent lighting left. There's some T12 lighting, and even some incandescent lighting left. There is some LED lighting in quite a few places, especially corridors and places that have been renovated recently. But overall, renovating to an LED source is less maintenance. They don't fail as quick. You don't get the buzzing noise in the classrooms. There's a lot of positive qualitative benefits to it as well. It's a better general light source on your eyes. There's quite a few areas for envelope improvement. I do commend the district for going and changing windows out in Fairview and other places, but, you know, O'Hara's a glass tunnel. You know, this is uninsulated building, virtually no insulation on the roof, very poor-performing glass, very drafty building. And, you know, something like that, you're just fighting against nature with your equipment. It's doing the best it can to keep people comfortable, but you're really kind of just wasting a lot of energy to do so. So making envelope improvements at a place like this can make a big difference. And I talked, one of the clear things we first saw was a lot of obsolete boilers, stuff that's over 25 years old, that they don't make parts for. If something fails, you're gonna be down a boiler for a while, because a lot of times they're gonna have to custom-make the parts to get them to you. They're heavy maintenance. And this example here on the right, this boiler on the right is from 2016 renovation of the high school. It has lots of failures. It's hard to get parts for. They have to go directly to the manufacturer to get parts. It's, not all boilers are that way, but unfortunately, this one turned out that way. And so where you have kind of a new and an old, as I mentioned, sometimes just don't work well together. This plant is very inefficiently designed. It was actually redesigned in 2016 to be efficient, but the way it got laid out and implemented ended up not being energy efficient. This could be much simplified into a much more reliable and very, very efficient system. There's similar systems at Dorseyville and O'Hara to this, where there's obsolete equipment. These are very straightforward projects that will result in pretty immediate savings, and very large portions of what you saw in our, towards our 20%. Same with the domestic hot water heating systems. This is an antiquated way of designing boilers for heating water. You don't use that much domestic hot water. You have low-flow fixtures in bathrooms, hand washings, virtually no hot water. You've got your kitchen, they have booster pumps and booster heaters. Dishwashers have their own. You don't need a giant tank full of hot water today. And you have it all year, and you're constantly heating that 24 hours a day to keep from getting bacterial growth and Legionella. Across the district, our recommendation was to look at getting rid of tank-style water heating, and putting in point-of-use or instantaneous electric hot water heating. And there's also life safety systems, like these generators here, that are ones original to the building. These are things that if there's a problem, you want the lights to come on for people to safely evacuate, and elevators to respond. And if the generators aren't working, that's a problem. So there's a few examples of this. I know it's been on the agenda here, but we did see quite a few things that are just at the end of the life, they need to go. When we looked at phase two of the plan, now we're looking at more systemic issues, changes. So we're talking about boiler plant, that's not a whole system change. We're talking about just simplifying what you have there, to get very real energy savings and set the building up for a good future. When we look at this, now we're looking at more technology changes. How do we prepare for future electrification of systems? Some people might say, well, hey, you're recommending decarbonization, but you're putting boilers back in? Good question. Yes, because those boilers are gonna last you 15 to 20 years. They're gonna make an immediate impact on your carbon footprint, and the technology isn't there for efficient electric... My champion moment! The technology's not there right now for efficient electric heating. But it's coming, and I'll show you that. One thing I wanted to point out, there's air-cooled chillers here, and most of the schools have the same model of air-cooled chiller. This particular model's been not even 10 years old, and it's got problems. It's, I call it a lemon. They've had over $100,000 of repairs just at this school in the last nine years, with most of that coming recently. So it's the same make-model vintage at the other schools. I expect that to happen there. This is something that we don't say replace today, but it's not something to wait for the end of the useful life at 30 years. Do it before then, because it's gonna be a real cost to the school district. And then the final phase is really the most complex part of it, is like looking at, how do we generate energy? How do we look at next-phase technologies onsite? And again, decarbonization is getting rid of this pipe. You don't want this big old yellow natural gas pipe coming into your schools. So when we look at kind of that Scope 2 emissions, like where you're getting your power from, and how dirty it is with carbon, this is from the Energy Information Administration from last, a report last year, showing what the projections are by 2015 for growth. Renewables outpace any other source of generation on the grid, which is promising. Natural gas shrinks a little bit, stays where it is. It's relatively carbon less compared to the bottom coal, which we see almost eliminated by 2015. So your Scope 2 are gonna go down naturally, just through grid emissions going down. But you using less electricity also helps. So we did look at the challenge of putting renewable sources in your buildings here. We looked at every single school, not just the four that we had in our scope, we looked at all six, and we did some detailed modeling to determine where solar panels could go. And we looked at three different types, putting them on the roof of the buildings. I'm just gonna show you the high school, the rest are in the report. Putting them in carports out on the parking lot, and then also ground-mount systems, which we couldn't find any areas that were suitable, that weren't being used for playing fields, parking, or anything that where we could put it, on any of the schools, that could generate meaningful electricity. So really, we came down to carports and roof-mounted solar. A lot of detail goes into this, because there's investment tax credits, there's solar credits. I think I got that on one of the slides here coming up. But when we looked at it, the cost here is a million. So for instance, the high school, if you did everything I just showed you, it'd be about $3.2 million to install that. Now, the question is, is it feasible? We're not structural engineers, and we did our best to kind of analyze what the feasibility of generation is, and how much you can produce. But roof-mounted is tricky. We've gotta be able to put five to seven pounds of additional weight on these existing roofs that were put in those different hodgepodge's of additions and renovations over time. And it's likely that most of the roofs can't support that additional weight. Generally, what we suggest is, when you're doing a major renovation, have that evaluation done. And if there's upgrades that can be done, that's the time to do it. So if there's structural work that needs to happen to a roof, that's gonna be the time to do it. Your best bet is to do solar on a roof. It's gonna be the least-cost method of getting generation on your buildings. The problem with the carports is the economics on them don't pay back very well, because you have to get the structure to support it. It has to support snow and ice and all of that. So you're actually building structure like you would have to do on the roof. So if we, a good comparison on the roof mount is, if we did have to do structural work to the roof, it would actually come in economically more like what we see with the carports, which back here, I know it's hard to see from your vantage point here, but like the rooftop without any structural work was 14-year payback after incentives and after tax credits. And the carports were 22 years, which solar panels design for about 25 years before it starts losing its ability. It degradates. It doesn't generate as well anymore. So once you get those paybacks over 15 years, it's kind of hard to justify the project from an economic standpoint. And this is with some pretty heavy incentives included. These were the tax credits, federal clean energy investment tax credit, solar alternative credits, or SRECs, which is a fairly new thing. That can get a little bit bookkeep-y, but the math on it's pretty easy. And then the Pennsylvania Solar for Schools program is a very nice method. We have a lot more detail on the economics of these. For example, I put this in the presentation, we'll skip over it now for math's sake, but... And then just wanted to point out, the reason the economics don't turn out well is, you don't really pay much for electricity. Your blended rate is right around 10 cents kilowatt hour, which is absolutely about as low as it gets outside of being in Utah, where it's 4 cents a kilowatt, because they make it all out of hydropower. It's really low power rate. You're not gonna have a lot of payback. And you can't sell that power back to the grid for much, and that's where a lot of the benefit goes away from an economic standpoint. Environmental standpoint, obviously, it makes a big impact, but if you're trying to make a business case for it economically, it's not gonna have a great attractive payback. Also, it's not as sunny as Denver here. Don't know if you knew that, but it's not one of the hotspots for generation, so that did degrade some of the generation capabilities. We use a pretty powerful modeling software. It's extremely accurate to do that, so that's kind of where the sun hours came in here. We also looked at geothermal systems. They're technically called geoexchanged systems, but they're in practice known as geothermal systems. So this is ground coupling your HVAC system with subsurface pipes, wells is what we call them. They go down here in this neighborhood where they're done in a few instances. I know Carnegie Mellon has at least two buildings with geoexchanged geothermal. There, they drilled about 600 feet deep for each bore, and they could use that to try to generate or reject heat. So think of the earth as like a battery. It's charged, discharged, charged, discharged. So we're gonna put the heat into it in the summer, and we're gonna take the heat out of it in the winter. So when we size these systems, we gotta take that into account. It has to be even. If you have a battery charging that's uneven, what happens over time is your battery just doesn't work. And believe me, it happens all the time. These things get designed that way, and we have to figure out how to make it work. So the way we looked at this was, let's size it for your cooling load, because you saw earlier your heating load's way higher. You use a lot more heat, 2/3 versus 1/3. So we sized it for the peak cooling plant, and then we said, let's make it the geothermal even to that, and then we'll trim everything else with some kind of either electric or gas boiler. And so that's where the statistics came in here, as far as how many wells we could do. It doesn't mean it's feasible. You know, we need to be able to drill 500 feet deep in this analysis. We need to be able to drill in these potential areas, like the ballpark parking lot there. There's general, genuine cost to doing that. You've gotta redo your baseball field. You gotta redo your parking lot. You gotta redo your soccer fields. These can be very expensive places to do it. In most of the cases where we found areas to do it, it was with a field. The other part is, we don't know what's under the earth. We need to do a test bore to, one, determine the thermal conductivity, to see how much energy we can put in the battery and take out of the battery, but also to see if there's something down there we don't know about. Is there a mine underneath the surface? We know that happens in this area. So it's generally feasible, as far as the area exists, to manage the peak cooling load of each facility. So every school, we had the land to do it. It's just whether it can support it. The other part of that is the economics. It's gonna save some energy, but again, your electric rates are very low, so you're gonna have a hard time making just a payback, simple payback kind of analysis on it. Even with the 40% potential tax credit, if you use qualifying labor, you know, that's going down 4% next year, so it'll be, you know, 36%, and then 30, 33, that goes down again. And there's always, with any tax credit, there's always potential politics that it could go away. It could be unfunded at some point. So there's risk to taking these things, because these projects take years to develop. And kind of finally here to wrap up, future technologies, there's two that I recommended in the report. As you're looking at renovating, a lot of the buildings have rooftop units. They're not off the boiler plant, they're not off the chiller plant. They're standalone equipment that heat and cool themselves. A lot of them have natural gas supply to them. This building has over 35, I think 40, rooftop units alone. It's a lot. And I know you guys just did Hartwood, and you know how many units there are. There's a lot of rooftop units on this campus. Looking at air-source heat pump technology, which would eliminate the natural gas, is a much more efficient. The question got earlier when I presented this, and I thought it was a good point, you know, the electric source heat pump heats at 400% efficiency compared to a natural gas burner on the same equipment that heats at 90% efficiency. So it offsets that cost delta that electricity has over natural gas, and makes it essentially in economics almost even. So it's, there's a little cost premium, but it's very minor. This is a very common piece of equipment. And it works in cold climates. There's no concerns with that. The second piece of equipment here is this air-to-water heat pump. This is an emerging technology. Very few manufacturers make this right now. Originated in Europe, but it's not originally intended for cold climates, because it loses capacity below 10 degrees Fahrenheit, and it kind of falls off a cliff around 20 degrees Fahrenheit below zero. So this technology is emerging. We've been looking at it in New York, Chicago here. It works, but it's not yet something I consider a proven or reliable technology, and I don't think I'd recommend it until I've seen it work for at least a couple years in a cold climate. So, but this is coming. This is where the setup comes in that phase two. Like, let's think about, let's put that boiler plant in in phase one. Let's get that simplified. Let's, you know, replace the chillers. When both those things die in 20 years, then this technology be there, and you'll have everything in the infrastructure to support that. So last point is, where do you start with all of this? Let's go for 20%. Let's hit this phase one target. And where do we look first? I say, I see 20% of Fox Chapel High School. These projects are very straightforward. They're very real. The building automation system, the boilers can be done. If you had to prioritize over, are there any other school? This is the biggest one. It's gonna make the biggest impact to the district. And again, you're gonna see faster economic banking on the project. There, I had an automation on that. That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Skelton?
Any questions? I feel like someone else should start.
Okay, I'll start. So what, did you see any physical barriers that would prevent us from making these upgrades? It sounded like the core facilities, the space, the, other than the rooftop, like you mentioned, have any other barriers to implementing these high-efficiency systems in the buildings? Like, we don't wanna do other construction projects to enable this one, right?
No, that's a great point. I mean, the ideal thing would be, and the buildings that could use it, is the envelope improvements, and that's a physical barrier. To get to O'Hara, for example, to get an installation on the walls is hard. Like, you're gonna have to tear all your walls out. And, you know, by the time you do that, is there actually a net benefit to the building? To get to the roof is a little easier. To get to the walls above the ceilings, the walls are really high above the ceilings there. That's a place where, in the report, we recommended, like, let's try to cut the barriers down on this one and focus there. One barrier to electrification is power capacity. So as you're designing for the future, the buildings don't have exceedingly, exceeding amounts of electricity ready to go put this future technology chiller in. That has to start happening now, when you're doing these retrofits, is understanding, if you're gonna bring a new power service in, because your gear that you have is antiquated, which you do have some of that throughout the campuses, some old gears, like Fairview, for example, has some very old electric gear in it. If you're gonna go replace that, think about that. Think about, like, bringing something in that doesn't have to have all the infrastructure for it, but it can have the supply for it. But that's been, those are the two major things I saw.
And it sounds like you're strongly recommending focus on building efficiency before source management. Source management's gonna be a bigger challenge. Economically, it doesn't work out as clearly as the building efficiency.
Yeah, building efficiency, if you can drop that as low, and then your source management becomes easier. It's much easier to plan when you don't have as much to source.
You don't have to get as much. And then what are you seeing in terms of trends, in terms of the costs of these, the cost and availability of the equipment? Like, in terms of planning and inflation, we're gonna be talking about funding soon. So funding sooner versus later, are we seeing high inflation and cost escalation?
Inflation, not as much. It seems to be pretty steady. Most mechanical equipment goes up about 5% per year, and it stayed that way last year. Despite higher interest rates and all that, financing's different than inflation costs on equipment. The main thing that we've been asked about is like lead times on equipment. They've dropped substantially. Now, tariff things can always change that, but right now, we're not hearing too much in the near-term immediate concern with that. Most of the equipment we recommend is American-assembled, at least, but we do run into parts of it coming from overseas that can be subject to that.
And then along those lines, what about energy costs? Are there trends that we should be aware of in the next five to 10 years?
I wouldn't expect in the next five years that you'll see really any difference in natural gas pricing. In fact, in the next 10 years, I'd be surprised if it's substantially higher. Electric is gonna continue to stay really low where you have it. You work with a consortium, they're always looking at your economic costs. What they're not looking at is your source. So they're not taking the mix into account necessarily. Generally, they're trying to get you the best deal for, you know, lock you in for as long as you can with the rate that they can get you. So that would be going in that Scope 2 area, where we're looking at where the generation sources are. If you wanted to have, start looking at carbon versus cost, that argument could happen. But I don't see your forecast, and haven't seen any forecasts, where electric rates or natural gas are gonna change. There's no regulations coming out for either of those.
There are policy initiatives that have targeted the region for data center development, which have locally elevated energy costs. Would you be able to provide, or maybe is this a part of your deliverable, a payback schedule that accounts, that would give us sort of that grid view of, as our kilowatt-hour costs increase, how does our payback schedule change for some of these technologies?
Your escalation schedule? I could get you something on that. Again, I...
I imagine the math isn't too complicated?
It's not complicated at all. It's, the forecast is the complicated part. Like, do we trust that? My personal opinion on the data center boom is it's a boom. It's not gonna be here forever. By the time we, by the time people start considering generation sources, they're gonna move to a different site, because they move too fast. I think there's maybe a little scare there, in my opinion, but we'll see.
That's helpful, yeah.
The system that we use right now for the automation to control all the chillers, do you have an idea, or someone, as to how old the system is at this point, and if it's a freestanding system, where anyone can come in and fix it or control it, or if it is a proprietary?
It's varying ages, and I'm sure Dan can elaborate on the different ages, if you'd like, but it's...
It's over 25 years or so, and it's recent as a few years. We do have a closed protocol, a proprietary system, but we're working to integrate that in every building as we move forward with automation. So the head-end or main equipment that we currently have, as Betty mentioned, in July, we had a failure. We did have a failure with that computer, and if that happened, we'd have absolutely no control of the system. Not that we wouldn't have heating or cooling, we just could not control it, shut it off, turn it on. And ironically, today is a perfect example. We were sitting in a room that was 69, 70 degrees this morning, and it's 76 degrees right now. We're still in cooling mode, unfortunately, the automation just quit working.
So do all six schools, at this point, are they all on the same automation system? No?
We are moving, the ultimate goal is to move to an open protocol system, non-proprietary. That's what we have a group of guys working right now over at Hartwood, getting that school online. And ultimately, so Betty had mentioned that the idea of, hey, we need to fix our automation, but it's sort of like, there's a bunch of other things we need to fix with that, like the boilers, the rooftop units, the VAB boxes, and our end units, which are going to be like unit ventilators within classrooms. So we don't wanna fix that equipment today, because we're gonna put a new boiler in tomorrow, or in the future, in the near future. So it's kind of like a comprehensive package that we're working to look at.
Yeah, I think things aren't always adaptable in that case. And as I mentioned, like Dan's saying, the end-use things that really drive the whole building, just right now, that visibility, that control doesn't exist.
So out of curiosity, how long was it before we realized there was an issue in July that things had gone wrong? Before we actually knew?
The, the issue is, I, I mean, we knew instantly that there was something wrong. We have a computer system, we know there's something wrong. The, the bigger issue is, over the years, we wanted to migrate away from the Seaman System and it is incredibly cost prohibitive to do it. And you need to do it when you're doing your comprehensive renovation. And that's where the issue is. We need to do that comprehensive mechanical to tie the, the automation system to the new equipment. It would not make sense, I use the analogy of putting new, new tires on a car that you're taking to the junkyard. And that's basically what we would be doing. We'd be spending a tremendous amount of money to retrofit equipment that is just at the end of this life or beyond.
My main curiosity was just the fact that if, like, we were away for like a week or two and no one was actually in the building, like, in the summer, monitoring such systems, like, unfortunately, last summer, we had the issue at one of the elementary schools where the water, the water went the wrong way and it filled up the basement. Was that fair?
Fairview.
Fairview. I was just looking at overall, just, we, we unfortunately seem to be having these issues.
That's, that's the reality of where we're at with some of the equipment. And so to answer your question, could we go a week and not know? None, because we have checks and balances in place that we don't leave the building vacant. We, we ask our staff to come in and check on things like this.
Okay.
You know, whether there's a leak or, you know, that's how we found our issue over the winter break last year when we had pipes froze. You know, it was just tremendously cold. Pipes froze, we had people in the building that we molly-wood for just a regular routine check. So, you know, nothing, our, our, none of our buildings would ever go without a problem.
Okay. I, I was just curious. So essentially, the chillers and heating is what we have to look at first, is updating those in all the schools in order to, I mean, where are those in their lifespans? I mean, the high school, for instance?
So, so the boilers in the high school, the boilers in every school with the exception of-
Fair.
Fairview are obsolete. They're not in good cond-, I mean, they, they're in great condition, operating condition for what they're at. I mean, honestly, they, a picture doesn't do it justice, it looks great. You think it's great, it's well-maintained, but it's obsolete, they can't get parts for it.
Hartwood's being replaced right now, right?
I'm sorry.
Hartwood was, is being replaced with new boilers, yeah?
Yeah, correct. That's correct.
Yeah, I do, I really, I want to say I really appreciated the equipment condition assessment schedule in the back of this. That was really rad. Because it allows us to quickly, like, you can quickly, the, the color coding is really nice, but I do think it, it also has a public communication value insofar as how we communicate the prioritization of systems moving forward. One of my concerns that I, that was, that was addressed here to some extent, but I think is going to be the real challenge for our team, is the whack-a-mole problem, where if you're, if you do whack that mole now, if it's a boiler or an RTU or whatever it is, right, do you close the door for subsequent solutions that are more comprehensive and more effective, right? You mentioned geo-exchange, right, is a perfect example where you start to eat away at that payback period. If you don't have systems, you can tie into it. If you don't have systems that can benefit from this, this source of ground energy, right? Can you talk a little bit about maybe how you have seen districts succeed in nesting that rollout to maximize the long-term benefit? Like, is, does this phase plan account for those sort of codependencies of, of improvements?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. So, yes, that's kind of the, the idea of having to go in and do like the boiler plant isn't to do a like-for-like replacement. That's what's happened in the past. Like, like, like-for-like replacements, someone takes whatever piece of equipment you got, throws it in exactly the same size, no thoughts put to it. That's not what we're suggesting at all. We're saying, look at this from the phase plan and where we want to go as a district and where we can be. So when, I'm proposing a boiler plant retrofit for the high school. Having the two small boilers from 2017 and the three boilers from 2001, getting rid of that whole system and setting it up so it's just one single boiler system that is reliable, high-efficiency boilers. But when you do that, we're repiping it. We're piping it into a place where in 15 years, if we wanted to put that air source, water-air source heat pump in, you can do that. All we have to do is connect the pipes to it. It's a much smaller project and the boilers go away, or if you want to do geothermal, like you said, boilers can stay and we'll just run the new pipe to the field. But we can't do that without changing the infrastructure. If we try to just use what you had here today, it, it's going to be a mess. You're going to have to kind of redo everything. So doing that now isn't really a big stretch for a project compared to trying to do that infrastructure later.
Thank you. So yeah, so paraphrase, we can use this as a recipe essentially for building a more complete efficient, completely efficient system over a long term. It is incremental and intended to roll out in that way. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think that was a point that we discussed with the Hartwood discussions as well.
Yeah.
Trying to make sure we weren't building ourselves into, yeah, natural gas boilers permanently.
Yeah, or, yeah, or natural gas rooftop units permanently, which I, we sort of did, but at least those are modular and we can swap them out as they fail.
You can put air-source heat pumps in.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, just run that in.
I was interested that, I've seen some school projects that, that, that use battery backup alternatives to generators. That did not, that was not elevated in your report. Can you talk about why?
You, you don't pay much for electricity. It just, economics would never, never make sense. Yeah, we, we see that too in places where there's high demand charges and it can be used to offset that. You don't pay high demand charges.
Right.
There's a few things that didn't make sense to put in there. You know, we looked at even like battery storage with solar. We, we had some information on that that we studied and it just, it, it's part of the final phase, the phase three. It might make sense later when costs do escalate, but right now, it's not critical for your infrastructure. And you don't use battery backup here, or I mean, emergency power backup here in a way where it's anything beyond life safety. If you use it for something like, like when you have data centers or something where it has to stay online, that's when we start looking at that type of technology as well.
Okay.
Yeah, it's usually, it's usually driven by demand charges.
Okay. Yeah, and in that way, this seems tailored to our region. This is a Pennsylvania special, which I appreciate.
Yeah, Boston, yeah, you probably want there.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. Or Texas.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. And then, but one of my other questions, I, I appreciated also the future technologies nod. Can you talk about how we would better determine when air-to-water heat pumps are ready for deployment? Like, when would that, when is that, how do we know when it's time to look at something like that?
Ask your trusted consultants.
Yeah, right.
Honestly, I mean, right now, everything is in study phase. We've seen, we did a couple of installations for Amazon in New York State, which was two years ago. So we're just kind of watching, it was, you know, it's for a warehouse, but we're watching to see how they perform. You know, they work really well at Dallas-Fort Worth Airport because it's cooling all the time and it heats every now and then, but it's when it gets minus, you know, we did a design for a high-rise, 40-story building in Chicago. Trying to get it to be reliable to where the investors of the building would buy off on it was impossible. We just couldn't get them to trust in it yet because it just hadn't, there's no track record of it running. It runs in parts of Norway just fine, runs in other places, but it's not places where we're getting minus 25 degrees Fahrenheit on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Because at that point, if you go down, it loses all its capacity and the only way you can do that is design a boiler plant with 100% capacity. So now you're building two separate plants, the, the carbon infrastructure, that's just not worth it at this time. But that technology, it'll be, heat pump technology is here to stay. It is the next generation. Every house, every business is going to have some sort of heat pump in it in the next 10 years.
Yeah.
But air-source heat pumps are viable now?
Air-source are. They're, they're, they're viable because they have kind of a little electric resistance coil in it, so when it gets really cold, it runs, it's not efficient when it's really cold, put it that way. So it runs a little-
But it can supplement. It turns into-
It supplements it.
Yeah.
It turns into like an electric heater, right?
That's, that's it. What happens in the big units though, when you're trying to make 500 tons of cooling or 500 tons of heating, is that electric coil is going to burn the equipment to pieces. You know, it's going to melt it. It's just too, too, too much heat to try to supplement.
So you supplement with some of the boilers? Is that like a hybrid system so that you're doing a little bit of both?
Yeah, in that, in that case, yeah, we do more of a hybrid approach of, look at what the capacity is on the equipment, what it can turn down to and what we need to offset it when it's a peak situation. It's complicated in cold climates like this.
Yeah.
It is.
For that two weeks a year on it.
Well, that's the, that's the crazy thing. 99% of your year, you're not ever going to touch one of those temperatures, but we have to design for it because it's going to happen. And then you're freezing pipes.
I, I know you said this in your presentation, I just want to make sure I caught it. The cost estimates here and the payback periods as well as the annual cost savings, all the money side, are you making the assumption that current federal incentives are in place and are de-escalating at the rate that you had indicated? I mean, like, or are we ignoring sort of federal incentives that could exist in those cost estimates?
In the, in the estimates, I have noted where it's applicable.
Okay.
I listed that as applicable and we had it in a table. So that would have been the solar and geothermal options.
Okay. And that's as available, but that wasn't necessarily a part of the core, the value that you had indicated or quoted?
It would have been in the ta-, it's in the tables for those, for those particular examples. When it comes to boiler plant, there's not federal tax incentives for changing a boiler plant. So those basic projects that we had as kind of phase one didn't really have that applicable. There are rebates that we did not consider for those that come through the utility and that's because they're really small. And we don't want you to take that into account. That's kind of, I always call it the cherry on top at the end of the project, so.
They're not deciders, they're-
It's not a decider. It's not going to move the needle.
Okay, great.
But those, so those numbers include, they do include the federal, current federal incentives, which, you know, if there's uncertainty there, there's uncertainty in those numbers.
Were, were they applicable? They're there and they're in table form so you can cross it out.
Okay, I see. I got, okay. I see what you mean now.
Yeah, yeah. We tried to break that out for that very purpose.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I had, as someone who was not on the board when, when you were contracted to do this, I so much appreciate this report. I think it makes it really easy for someone to enter the conversation later and I, I hope that it will be available in some form to the public. We can talk about what that looks like more.
That's up to the board and, and we would just verify with Mr. Jeffrey, there's something that has to be removed.
My question then, and maybe, maybe Projects and Planning wants to chime in, what this looks like next? So how do we make sure we're leveraging this invaluable piece of information and resource, incorporating it into a revised capital improvement plan and what that looks like next?
That's the question.
Well, I can share with you what our plan is. And, and this is the plan no matter what. Mr. Brightcrace and I have already spoken over the summer. He and Mr. Perkins revised our multi-phase capital projects plan as they do on a regular basis because of different projects that have been completed or not completed or need to move around. I know that we shared some of that information with Mr. Skelton, who gave his recommendation for that. But his report is only the mechanicals of our district. It is not every project in our district. That's not what it was, it was designed for. So Mr. Brightcrace and I spoke this week and he's working on editing our multi-phase capital projects plan for the board that includes the holistic picture of all the projects and what our first steps would be. And based on what, what Mr. Skelton has said, as well as it's the same project that, that Mr. Brightcrace and Mr. Perkins identified two years ago, the high school is the first project. It needs to be done and the cost savings could help fund future projects. The other two would be Dorseyville and O'Hara. And so we will have some kind of a, a, an additional, you know, updated multi-phase capital projects plan that includes this information that will constantly be changing as we keep moving forward. And then as to the timing, that'll be what the Projects and Planning Committee speaks about and as to the funding of it. Because after the Hartwood project, there won't be, there is not enough funding left in our capital projects plan, probably for a high school project. So the, the timing will just have to be a combination of, of when to do that and, and how to fund, so.
Yeah, and we look forward to working with Dan and team. I think it'll be fun. And this is, this is really, this is incredible ammunition for that discussion. I think that's really powerful. Thank you.
Very nice. I'll pass that along to my team. They'll be happy to do that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, one more thing, I just want to say I appreciate the engagement and policy ingredient. I hadn't expected that as a part of this proposal or this output. And I, I loved the suggestion to form a district green team. That's something I've seen a lot of other districts do. We have really meaningful discussions about finance, about infrastructure. We have really meaningful discussions in, in this board space and in our curriculum meetings, right? But I don't know that we connect the dots together in a separate convening around sustainability. And I think, I've seen, again, I've seen other districts take that step with a resolution that, that sort of calls to action, this, this formation of something like that. And I would love to see our board consider that in a coming month because I think that's a way that we can really substantively take action and support the sort of continued commitment to what's laid out here. So I'd be interested in chatting with all of you about that in the coming months.
Love that idea. Also to, to offer, it's more on the engineering and math side of it, but we did set this building up for benchmarking and that could be maintained by this green team. And our team loves to help mentor students. So anytime that comes up, you know, we'd love to participate and help show how to navigate it. We've got a great team that does that.
Yeah, our students have already shown incredible enthusiasm for this area. I think at multiple, across multiple buildings, I think they're probably one of the most continuously enthusiastic groups. So, yeah, that's great.
Have a safe flight. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And we have one more person under our superintendent's report. It's a busy superintendent's report today. This is what happens when you have a busy school district. Next, we have Chris Brewer. Christopher Brewer is a partner at Dinsmore &amp; Scholl and he's going to discuss our bond resolution and timeline and do a presentation on that. So I'll turn that over to you. Thank you.
Dr. Jeff, thank you very much. It's good to see you all this evening. Thank you also, Mr. Hamilton, Dr. Jeff, for prefacing my presentation, which is, now that you've heard about all that needs to get done, I can help you get some money to get that done. As you'll recall, I was here back in June before you, together with Alicia Henry from PNC, at which time we laid out the idea that it was thought to be a recommended path for you to start to plan the next financing. We used the summer months to work on the documentation, this resolution that I have in front of you. More even importantly is the official statement that led us through a ratings process. Ms. Alicia did a great job, as always, in representing the district in front of the rating agencies. You have a double A-plus rating. And to my knowledge, I don't know that Pennsylvania school districts get triple As. I think you have about as high as you're going to get. And one of the reasons for that is simply that you don't get to control all your finances. You're limited by some of the state laws, by your Course Act One and all those sorts of limitations on your ability to run your own affairs entirely. Even with that said, the number of municipalities that have double, triple As is extremely limited in this Commonwealth, perhaps a dozen. So you're up among the highest ranks for sure. With that said, the resolution that we drafted, been reviewed by your administration, by Mr. Jeffrey, is a standard document. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. It does several things all at once and it has a certain length for those reasons. It authorizes the incurrence of indebtedness. It touches all the bases that the Debt Act requires you as a governmental body to, to, you know, provide for authorization, direction to officers, things like that. Certainly a covenant to budget and appropriate and pay back the, the debt. Much of the middle of the document is really the mechanics of a bond issue, things that day-to-day you don't need to be concerned about but are important to buyers and sellers of the bonds and to your paying agent that handles the payments and administration of bond issue. And then finally, we have federal tax and federal securities law covenants because these are taxes and bonds that go out in the public marketplace and will be sold and traded by investors. So you have certain responsibilities regarding your use of the money and certain responsibilities regarding your ongoing financial reporting, all of which is consistent with the debt that you have on the books. There's nothing new or different or extraordinary here. It's just, you know, borrowing a little more money to move forward. The resolution authorizes a maximum 12 million. I think as we also probably explained last time, that is because under the Debt Act and under DCD's interpretation of it, the schedules for debt service that are in here have maximums not only in the total aggregate, but per year. So that PNC and generating these schedules and providing them to our office needs to leave a little extra space for principal amortization each and every year during the term. For that reason, we say up to 12 million, but there is language in the resolution that indicates that, that you're only going to authorize and sell for this transaction, the 10 million or under issue that PNC has recommended. For that reason, it will, it will meet some of the best of the federal tax law characteristics. It will not only allow banks to invest to their tax advantage because of the way they account for their cost of funds, but it also, in the market as a matter of how the bonds typically sell and trade, will bring you the shortest period for an optional redemption, a five-year. So that just keeps you light on your feet, if you will, in terms of your debt management. So, you know, if you'd like, I can try to emulate the other presentation for about an hour here or so, but I think that absent the band, I'm not going to be able to keep you interested. Questions for me on the bond resolution, what it accomplishes? If you do move forward with this tonight, which we would recommend, I think that PNC believes we should get to the market here promptly. I think it has, no one has the crystal ball, but it has been a pattern of some sorts that, that Labor Day is a funny kind of time. Markets kind of shift and move. And of course, we have a Fed Reserve meeting coming up. So, I think they're feeling, they're seeing a nice, clear path here and they would probably like to move forward.
And the, sorry, when is the Federal Reserve issue coming up, you said?
The meeting. They, I think they're doing their Jackson Hole meeting before the end of the month, but then the, the actual core, open market meeting is in September, mid-September.
Okay.
So, by and large, staying away from those kind of flashpoints is sort of what you'd like to try to do. For example, this week, at least from my eyes and reading, stock market was down a bit, CPI is coming out soon, so traders tend to pull back and hedge their positions and things like that.
So your expectation right now is that if, if we pass this resolution, the bonds will be issued like within days?
Within the week or so, they would market the bonds and sell them. That would lock in your borrowing rates and costs and debt service. Closing though, doesn't happen for another month. That's necessary for us to get the documents down to Harrisburg, get the approvals back and bring you to a closing.
Any other questions?
I guess my questions maybe aren't for you, so maybe that would be something we would discuss at the time that we deliberate in terms of some of the rationale coming from our Resource Planning Committee, other members of the board, the long-term financial plan of the district, right? So we can save this time for later, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I'm good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Roljak.
That concludes the superintendent's, actually, it does not conclude the superintendent's report. I just want to say, it's been a joy to get the 25, 26 school year already underway. We had new teachers who joined us for induction last week. They've completed three days. As you heard, the band has been practicing. So we have been graced with band camp and hearing that. We also have senior pictures happening the next few days. Our fall sports are underway and our staff comes back on Wednesday. All of our educators, I shouldn't say staff, we have a lot of people that have worked a lot of hours over the summer, but our educators will come back for the year on Wednesday and our students next week. So I am thrilled to see everybody. A school really isn't a school unless it's filled with activities. So, welcome back. And that does conclude my report, Ms. Dad.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jeffrey, is there a solicitor's report?
No report, student.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular business meeting dated June 9th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Corrections? Okay. Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Facilities and transportation, sorry to put you on the spot, but Dr. Hasselcorn, since, oh, I'm sorry, I skip public comments. I'm out of practice.
Give me a moment.
No public comment, okay. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Dr. Hasselcorn, since Mrs. Lynch is not here, could you read facilities and transportation?
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Um, oh, here it is. Okay, so, three items. First, school bus driver approval, 25, 26 school year, approve the hiring of the ABC Transit Incorporated drivers from the attached list, subject to verification of all required licensing clearances and all other essential employment requirements for school bus operators under the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The administration shall complete the verification prior to the first day of school for the 25, 26 school year. Second, change order number one, Fox Chapel Area High School Domestic Water Line and Service Replacement Project. Approved change order number one as attached for the Fox Chapel Area High School Domestic Water Line and Service Replacement Project in the amount of $24,164. And number three, acceptance of the bid for general construction contract Fairview Elementary School Window Replacement Project. Accept the bid of the bidder listed below for the Fairview Elementary School Window Replacement Project conditioned upon the contractor completing their post-bid award documents and final draft of the AIA agreement to Moritz Construction Company for the general construction contract with a base bid amount of $729,000 and accepting alternate bid number two in the amount of $72,000 for a total contract award of $657,000. Oh, let's see, okay. Total contract award of $657,000. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. How are we doing on our bus drivers and how many were, we've been short every year for a few years, so I'm wondering how we're.
We're better than we ended last year, but we still are short six drivers and some other staff down at the transportation, at ABC Transit, but I know Mr. Brightcress has been working with the bus company again to get that remedy.
Okay, thank you.
What is the, what is our retention rate typically, like a ballpark? Like, year over year?
You know, I'd be a wild guess, to be honest. I can try and find out for you though.
I was just curious, because I think retention is always the other hand of recruitment, right? If you want to, it's a little, a little, a little of both, so that's maybe worth looking at in the future.
Any other questions?
Just a, a point of information, is the base bid supposed to be the 657 with the alternate for the total of 729, or am I?
No, the alternate base, alternate bid two is actually negative 72,000.
Oh, now I understand.
So, it was a, it was a deduction.
Yes.
And, and that is really a result of taking it from nine panels of glass to four panels of glass. So it's a little bit cheaper, there's less metal.
They're lovely windows, almost blue.
I looked at it twice as well, so I understand.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton, will you read the finance report, please?
Yes, I'd like to move on the items one through seven in the finance report and then move on item eight separately. Item one is disbursements from Fund 10 for June 2025. Fund dis- general fund disbursements from Fund 10 in the amount of $14,230,245.70. Item two is the disbursements from Fund 10 for July 2025. Fund disbursements from Fund 10 in the amount of $7,700,728,283.37. Item four is June disbursements. Capital Reserve Fund disbursements from Fund 31 in the amount of $830,999.96. Item four is disbursements from Fund 31 for July 2025. Capital Reserve Fund disbursements from Fund 31 in the amount of $1,999,255.05. Item five is the finance report from May 2025. Finance report from May 25, 25 is acknowledged and filed for audit as attached. Item six is the finance report for June 2025. The June 2025, uh, report finance report is acknowledged and filed for audit as attached. And item seven is the student activity finance reports, fourth quarter 2024, 25. Middle school and high school act student activity finance reports are acknowledged and filed for audits as attached. I move on items one through seven.
Second.
Any questions or comments on those seven items? Okay. Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn?
Yes.
Ms. Zich?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dad?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, and I'd also like to move to approve resolution 2025 dash eight bond issuance. Approve resolution 2025 dash eight as attached, as prepared by the District Bonds Council authorizing the issuance of ser- of series of 2025 bonds in order to secure funds for capital projects. I move on item eight.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Zich, you, I think this is your time that you wanted to ask them.
I think it's Mr. Hamilton's time.
I'm happy to start out.
If you want to kick us off, just to, I guess maybe like if you could frame the, sort of the need for this bond, that would be helpful.
This is, this is the, not the culmination, but the fruition of a few years of work that we've done as a board on capital projects, setting up the cap- the Projects and Planning Committee, first of all, setting up a capital plan, reviewing that plan, multiple years of putting aside money for our capital projects into our reserve funds so that we could fund as we go as much as we possibly could. I think what we've seen over the last year and what inspired from both capital plan, Resource Planning and the Projects and Planning Committees were both an increasing amount of repairs that we're having to see, we're seeing in our buildings and with, as we heard from the Cyclone Report, a real acute awareness of the state of our facilities. While we have invested in Core Elementary and other renovations, much of the under, under the hood workings of the school district are quite old and at the point of close to failure. We heard in the Cyclone Report, the term obsolete used multiple times. We've heard that we are having to obtain parts or have them made for us for equipment that is no longer manufactured. And we're, we're also seeing hundreds of thousands of dollars going out the door in inefficient systems. Water boiler that's keeping water hot all through the year that we could have much more efficiently. We have heating and air, air, air conditioning systems that are, and windows that are not keeping the buildings as efficient, nearly as efficient as they could. So, in, if we kept going on a pay-as-you-go basis, I just think it became clear to us that we would have to raise taxes substantially to keep up with these costs or we would seriously risk having to close buildings or, at the point of failure. Because we, you know, we just can't run that close to failure when you have these older systems. So, and to fund on a pay-as-you-go basis, even though we've done, we've got a substantial amount that we are getting to put into Hartwood and other projects, but some of them are not energy efficient, they're just keeping buildings roofs on and, and keeping buildings warm and facilities working. But the efficiency projects are the ones that really we need to accelerate in order to get those savings. This bond will net us approximately or close to, to, when we're all done, $10 million, which will significantly accelerate and allow us to move in parallel on multiple energy efficiency projects. That will result in about $600,000, $660,000 of, per year in additional bond, bond debt service. We, as a district, currently have a very, very low, and we heard this in our previous report from the Bond Council, a very, very low rate of indebtedness. We have, I was calculating, over the last few years, we've been at about three and a half percent of our expenditures, which is an extremely low rate compared to other districts, and our spend on debt service. So we have capacity to borrow. We have a double, double A plus credit rating, just renewed. So we have the capacity. So, we also know that there, that we've been seeing the inflation and we just heard some comments about inflation running at least 5% on equipment. If we wait, we will pay more and we will also continue to pay the cost of the inefficient systems, which also amounts to a few hundred thousand dollars a year. So when you offset the cost of 660, and from year one, when you implement some of these systems, you're going to get $170,000 a year, probably at least, in, in energy savings, you're, you're already offsetting a significant portion of the cost of, of the new equipment that we absolutely need. And we're talking about systems that are from, you know, a couple decades ago that are, that we, that are going to need replaced regardless. We might as well get it done soon and start reusing those savings and also have much better building controls, much better and more comfortable buildings. So, I think financially for the Projects and Planning, Resource Planning, also given the relatively favorable bond climate right now and rate, rate climate, that it makes sense for us to move faster. We really have explored the pay-as-you-go process. We're going to have to continue to invest and I think that's an important thing for, if I could write a note to future boards, whoever's here, three, five years, we've got to keep making those investments that we have been. If we do that, plus this bond, we'll be able to keep up and at least until we need a new building somewhere. If that becomes in, then we're certainly going to be looking at, you know, if that's a huge cost right here. But, but if, we're setting a path that we can sustain, I think. So that's my overall summary of where we are.
Thank you, that was a very good summary.
Could I just add one additional point in terms of, of efficiency and cost savings that came up at the Authority Board Meeting this morning, which was, a significant amount of time of the maintenance staff is used basically just keeping the systems running and upgrading would free up a huge amount of labor time to work on other projects that currently is just, their, their time is booked maintaining these old systems. So that's something that, we don't necessarily have a, a dollar amount to put against it, but in terms of the, the time it frees up for project work internally, I think is very significant.
Yeah, I'm going to add to that instructional days. Like one instructional day in this district is expensive because we serve a lot of students. And it certainly, it also has implications for health and safety. And that's, that's something that I take very seriously. So time out of building is something that I'd like to avoid.
But by instructional day, you mean if there's a failure?
I mean, if there's a failure, yeah. If we, if we flood a basement, if we lose power, if we lose a system that's a critical safety system, like a, like an emergency system, then we're, we can't put kids in the building. And that.
Has many, has many costs.
Has many costs, right? Not just direct costs, pocketbook costs, has costs to families who can't work that day because their kids are home, so. I'm interested, you know, because we're talking about long-term planning, one of my concerns for the why now problem, right? I appreciate that the market is, is favorable right now and that we're, I like that we have a group of people who are experts in understanding when that's, when it's time, when it's a, a good time to do this. My concern was, was, okay, we have these big projects like the high school on the horizon, does sort of soaking up some of our debt capacity now tie our hands later should we need to incur debt for a major project? You know, you mentioned major, like whole buildings. Can you speak a little bit about our long-term debt capacity as it relates to this choice? Are we closing doors by, by taking on this debt at this time?
I'll, I'll let Ms. Polashak out, I'll start, and then she may be able to give better commentary on that. When we looked at the bond resolution and we looked at what the debt would be adding to the debt service, as Ms. Polashak exchanged right now, it would really be more, instead of moving things into the capital projects plan for, as Mr. Hamilton said, the pay-as-you-go, we would be moving money into the debt service. So, it, it certainly works within our forecasting that we've been doing over the last few years. It just changes how we're sourcing those funds, but I'll let Ms. Polashak explain in, in any more depth or maybe in a better way than I did.
No, actually, I think that, that's really right along the lines. When we started, over the past, I shouldn't say started, over the past few years, when we've really been looking into this multi-phase plan and knowing the amount of funds that we needed, we had kind of reached a, a funding scenario of that kind of, you know, every year, we're going to transfer funds into the capital reserves and then, depending on how the priorities were of the projects, pay them off when that project comes into place. And it was really looking to be consistent. It was going to be anywhere from 1.5 million to 2.5 million a year that needs to be transferred into these capital reserves funds. And that, every year, was going to be balanced through the budget, on top of anything we were already paying for debt service. What we were looking at when going through this process for these, this new bond issuance, and then subsequently, we could, we also have refunding of a bond coming up and any other future bond issuance, because this doesn't, this won't tie our hands for future additions to debt service. Because what we were actually looking at is what we're able to possibly accomplish with this bond issuance now, is it's a smaller bond, it's a bond that we can also refinance in five years. So, while it's taking on 660,000 a year in debt, it's actually lessening that need of 1.5 to 2.5 million every year that we're, we would have to transfer into reserves just to accomplish these projects. Because that, that cost also included the 5% escalation every year and cost the longer we delay a project. project. This would actually put funds in our pockets and, and the, in the account, in the bank accounts, whatever terminology you want to use, now that we could really look at to say, let's get it done now. We maybe can eliminate some of that 5% every year cost escalations, get the projects done now and reallocate into debt service what we were thinking we needed to transfer to capital reserves. And then probably, you know, maybe still keep transferring to capital reserves, but we're not going to have to be looking at that 2.5 million dollars a year transfer to capital reserves. We're going to allocate some of it to debt service to pay down this bond issuance, but then still maybe only have half a million that we transfer. So we're really, when we were projecting, oh, some of those projects, we're going to need 2.5 million every year, find it through the budget. This actually lessens our projections and that we would maybe only 1 million each year to cover this, this bond and then maintenance for capital reserves fund transfers.
I will say too, when the Resource Planning Advisory approached us to look into this, so this was really an idea that came from our Resource Planning Advisory for a bank qualified 10 million loan, or bond, excuse me. The bank qualified allows that refinancing in five years. So we know it won't ever get any more and it's likely going to be refinanced. But the reason that they recommended this, because we had, we had, had really not been considering that, was as part of a multi-year, potential, and, and all of that's subject to change, but part of potentially a, setting up a multi-year process to be able to maximize on our bonds and our debt service as well as complete capital projects to reap savings with energy efficiency and less maintenance. So what they were looking at is if before the end of 2025, the board would choose to do the $10 million bank qualified loan, if the board approves that, that would be done before the end of 2025 calendar year. Because in 2026, we are eligible to refinance our next debt, the 2017 debt. You cannot do both in the same year. So they can't both be done in a calendar year. So we could do this bond issuance if the board would approve it. And then in the 2026 year, perhaps even as early as January, it would, it would be yet to be seen, but you, when is it, November?
So the, we would be able to accomplish these bonds by, you know, the end of 2025. The 2017 aren't eligible until I believe November of 2026 is the earliest. But the timeline that it allows us to capture is we could, as soon as we're able to accomplish that, assuming that there's room for savings and the financials do make sense, we could refinance those 2017 bonds towards the end of 2026. And then effectively, if we still wanted to continue trajectory, there was the ability that starting January of 2027, we could look for another smaller $10 million bond issue as well to get us along the lines of that, that total, you know, 30 million outstanding we're looking at for the multi-phase plan and kind of smaller segments and taking smaller hits against, towards our debt service, also with bank qualified bonds, which are callable. So they are, you can refinance them, refund them every five years as, as opposed to having to wait the 10 years that we did for the 2017 bond.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, I do appreciate, and I think this is maybe for those listening at home, like the analogy is like, as you shop for debt as a consumer, you should look carefully at the terms of the debt you're requiring, right? You read the, and there's, there's now federal law that requires they give you these nutrition facts about your APR and your payoff rate and all of that. And what it sounds like you've done really is shop for really smart debt, right? It's debt that, as you said, it's a fixed rate, but it could go down, right? It has a, it has a narrower refinance period, so we don't have to wait 20 years to refinance it, right? We're waiting a much shorter period of time. So what we're seeing is our debt burden, right? What we pay, the checks that we write to pay off our debt as a district are being managed actively so that it's stable over time. And I think what I'm hearing Mr. Hamilton saying as it relates to the, the capital plan, right, is that we don't ever want to be in a position where we have to get a payday loan, which is the absolute most expensive type of debt you could possibly acquire as a consumer. And obviously, we would never do that as a district, but there are versions of that where we have emergency debt that isn't, that isn't as favorable. And I, you know, I think again, that that's the sort of rationale that needs to come out of that committee. I think the Resource Planning Committee is valuable. I would love to see a little bit more continuous, like I know this has been a six-month process at least, right? But like I, I want to see that, that leave the meeting because it's smart.
Sure. And it really has actually been about a two-year process on the resource planning because two years ago, they did not recommend debt because we, it wasn't the right time and it wasn't the right position for the district. And now, when they came back, they said, this act, in fact, even our most staunch advocates to not take out debt said this made sense to them because it was a smaller chunk. It, it allowed the district more control over when it chose to take out debt and also have the ability to refinance it instead of being forced in, I loved your analogy of a payday loan. And that's not exactly, we don't need a loan for a payday. But, but if we would have a major system fail right now, we would need to borrow immediately if, depending on the size of the failure. And then you're just, you're in whatever moment you're in as opposed to being able to choose your moment.
No discretion. Yeah.
Yeah. And the, the initial, I believe hesitation or trying to veer away from the bond issue two years ago was we were looking at, would it be a, you know, $25 million bond issue, like a large bond issue that we'd still be paying off when the items were being replaced again. And that's why then the discussion kind of veered to this, looking at the smaller chunks. Because what it potentially could do, issue the 10 million, is then do the refinancing or the refunding and, and we'd actually could be dipping it, our total debt service back down and then allowing maybe an additional 10 million. And, and we're basically going to end up keeping our debt level with what we're potentially looking at now, just with those multiple steps. But this is just the first step that could potentially be the, the pathway forward to getting the bulk of these projects done. So we can begin to maybe recoup those energy efficiency savings.
Well, that's the point I wanted to really emphasize is in terms of keeping our debt level and in terms of future capacity, is we're at a very low level. This really doesn't, as a percentage of our expenditures, which is how everybody will look at it, they'll look at how much revenue we're expenditure, how, how big is this district and how much weight is the debt putting on us. And three years ago, 2022, 23, it was about three and a half percent of our budget. This will take us up, we were down now, this, this year that we're in now, we're down to three, just a little over 3% because that debt has stayed flat, debt stays flat and our budget grows because of inflation over time. So we're now down at 3%. With this issuance, we'll go up to about 3.6%, but over a couple, next couple of years, that percentage will come down because it stays flat again. We'll refinance probably next year if interest rates go favorably, which it looks like they probably will. And that'll come down even further. And then if we need to, so basically the bottom line is, as a percentage of our, we're, we're staying very low as a percentage of our expenditure.
What's a reasonable range?
Good question.
Of?
Of debt.
High debt, from what I've seen, high debt districts are over eight. Five is a, is a pretty good number in the threes, as I've seen. It's, we're at the very tail.
Yeah, we're, we're on the lower end of the spectrum for districts in Pennsylvania for our debt ratio.
I think some of the large urban school districts are in the 10% range.
Now, there's different pieces that go into that though, because you do have to figure it's your amount of, your dollars of debt and your dollars of budget. So it's, it's not necessarily apples to apples comparison because somebody could have a very small budget and it's just-
It gets, right. If you have a small-
There's additional pieces in there. It's not a straight comparison. But we are in terms, like comparing like to the, the state, the other districts in state, we are very low in, in our debt service.
Yeah, I think, I'm trying to hold in my mind a perspective that I've seen persists in our community so that I can help reconcile it with this decision, which is that we have raised taxes consecutively for a number of years associated with increasing costs, right? And we, we use those increasing costs, that extended budget, right, which has been very well justified in the past, but we, we, we use that as a rationale for raising a tax, our military, right, which increases revenue. How come that doesn't alleviate the need for debt? Right? And I, I, I know that because the, the debt's always been in there, right? Every one of those budgets, debt has been a very thin slice of our overall expenses, right? It's been this, and it is truly miniscule compared to what we spend on personnel, which is our strongest and most meaningful asset, right? But, you know, to my way of thinking, it's, it's, it's not the question of like, why, you know, why are we adding debt? It's actually, why are we maintaining it? Why are we maintaining that thin slice? Does that seem, how would you explain that?
So I think there's a couple of different areas there. It really depends on, A, how your debt is structured.
Sure.
Because, you know, we utilize the wraparound structure right now. That's been what's presented with, for ours. And it's really to keep that debt level. Not every district might utilize that. So some might see a very low year of debt service, some the next year, they might have to be, they might have to find $6 million to cover a jump in, in debt service. You're going to have debt mostly because if you have a project that's coming and you have an $8 million project, a school district cannot increase revenues in one year to cover that project. So you have to take on the debt to be able to pay for the project and then you pay off the debt. You can't fund a project through the budget, that, that's large. But you can fund the debt through your budgets. So that's why you're going to have debt. And, and that's really the, the simplest and easiest way to explain it is we're not going to be able to raise, the, the next phase, I believe, in my current iteration of the multi-phase plan is over $8 million. You can't raise that in one year with, with how school districts are constrained. So you have to take on debt or you have to plan, push off that project and plan years in advance to slowly piece those funds in while also being able to take care of all of your other daily operations that go into a school district budget. So you're going to have debt. You need to have, it's actually fiscally more responsible to have that debt as long as it's managed.
To maintain, yes.
Correct.
I think it's also fair because you really are taxing today's taxpayers. If you tried to, if you tried to pay your 10, 12 million dollar major capital project, which are very difficult to plan 10 years out in advance. And it, but you're going to reap the benefits over that over 10 to 20 years, which is, we're, we're trying to fund projects here that are going to last 20 years because that's how long the bond is. So certain projects that might, that maybe won't last that long, we're going to pay out of our own, we are going to pay out of our, the, the money that we have, that we have put away. But the longer term projects, you really want to spread out that cost. As long as you can get a good financing terms and good interest rates, you, and, and especially when you're looking at the, this inflation rate of 5% and our interest rate's going to be less than that on our bond, on our, on our bonds, it, it only makes sense to share, spread that over so you don't have this big hit onto the taxpayer. The taxpayers and the kids who are going to benefit for over the next 20 years will also, those budgets will carry it over that period of time. And that's much fairer than trying to lump it all at one time. Or trying to make pass tax, taxpayers save up. Then you're doing the projects really slowly and you're only doing them when you're sure that something's broken. And when you do that, this is the other thing I think if people don't get, like, yeah, you and I can wait till our car actually breaks and if we can't get to work tomorrow, we'll find another way to get there. But if a school breaks, there's 4,000 kids who aren't going to school, right? That is not tolerable. And the systems that broke won't necessarily be able to be replaced tomorrow or next week or even six months from now. It could take a year or to get some of the equipment that we're talking about and the plans and the design. So you can't wait to fix the boilers at the high school that are over 25, 30 years old, you know, that, you know, you can't wait till they're dead and, and unfixable because then you won't be in school.
I, I think moreover, it's good to remember that we already pushed things out three years, three, four years. We, we decided to, we already scaled back the plan and the more you do it, I mean, which makes sense.
Originally a five-year plan, then it became a five-phase plan, starting it out.
Five-phase plan, yeah.
Yeah.
It made perfect sense and it, and it, it was, it was the right decision and it gave us some more, we, we reorganized things and it, it was, you know, a little bit, it introduced a little bit of risk, but not, I think it was manageable. And we, you know, we paid some of those things with the, like, equipment failure and that kind of thing. But we've already sort of exhausted that. It gave us some breathing room and now we have the opportunity to jumpstart that and get back, back on track with that kind of cost that we have to pay to upgrade.
Yeah, I think like bullet points that should be, empath, said louder, for like that we just said, like, these aren't, give us fancier things. These are projects that our facilities would need to shut down for. I think the community needs to hear that. This isn't like, this is just coming up now. We've been talking about this at least since 2021, maybe. And we did push things back for the reasons that you just stated. And this, so this has been a multi-year planning thing. This isn't something that's just coming up. This isn't to make us prettier. This is to keep kids in school. So I think some of the conversation has been otherwise in the community, but I think like, you know, that's the headline. We're keeping kids in school. This has been a multi-year. We've taken the community into consideration, pushing back some of these expenses, going well beyond the lifetime of some of the things that we should have. And we have had to pay a premium for some of those. But this is the time now that we, we need to put more of that plan in action so we can keep our school district running.
On the level of thoughtfulness and strategy that is going into what that replacement will be, you know, we're not just going to, like, like Ms. Spelstra said, put in another boiler for the sake of saying we replace the boiler.
Right. That's a good point too.
Trying to make this a-
And that's another reason to try to get started now is because we, we want to get the, the, these projects rolling so we can get the planning done. We can, we know, when we know, and this is both financially prudent and organizationally a necessity, is like, you need to know the money's going to be there to really get the planning going. And we want to get this going. And I just, I want to thank the Cyclone team again for their great report because that really shown a lot, light and very technical details and some dollars on what, what things were cost, but also the savings, which are significant.
And I, I think that's what we, what we were hoping we would get when we commissioned the report. And I, as far as I can tell, I mean, we'll find out in a few years when we have things built, if it makes sense. But I mean, it looks, it looks great in my opinion. It gives us a lot of decision support here to, to put this into action. And I think the, the opportunity is, is here as well. The opportunity is also fairly, it's a timely opportunity. Like, we didn't have the opportunity to do this kind of bond two years ago where it wasn't recommended to do it. So the, the fact that it's, we, we've basically been thinking about this and planning around this for years. Now the opportunity is, is here to, to execute this particular financial mechanism. And it makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, we had a full conversation on bonds two budgets ago and if it was a way to go or not. So this is something that has been considered. It did make sense then. And it's, this is a different type of bond that we, wasn't in the conversation then. So I mean, this has been, we, we've talked about this at length. And people, smart people have written reports and looked at things.
Yeah. And it doesn't stop, right? Like, it doesn't stop there. I think that's the other thing is like, what we do in our, in our committees, right? And, and in public and here and-
And our committees are public.
And our committees are public. Please, please come to committee. But like we, this isn't a replacement for the critical evaluation of expenditures. Like every part of the Cyclone Energy Group report is a, is a, is a lot about money, right? Yes. And it, and we are interested in saving money. And that is something, we are trying to, to deliver value. We're not trying to deliver the fanciest things that money can buy. We're trying to deliver a very good value. And that-
And maybe cool this room a little bit.
And they, oh my gosh, it's hot in here. Yeah, for real. It's really hot in here.
Way to emphasize the point, guys.
Yeah.
For those of you not in here, it's getting warm.
So I just want to ask a question. In regards to emergency expenditures that we've spent over the last two to three years where stuff broke that we put off doing, what kind of money are we looking at?
I would, I, I mean, I, I would have to go back and look, but I do know in one month alone, I was listing it for the board, and I think in one month alone, when we moved from heat to air conditioning, if I'm not mistaken, we had emergency repairs at all six buildings, mostly some of the equipment that you saw pictures of. And I know in that one month alone, we went from 15,000 and then by the end of the month, it was like 96,000 in one month. And that was the last few weeks of school. So we could go back through and look at how much those emergency repairs are, but some of the emergency repairs are no longer 5,000 or 8,000 dollars. They're a hundred thousand dollars, 50,000 dollars at a time.
But what I'm, what I'm getting to the point is, is that we set our budget to the dollar.
Yes.
So then we magically have to come up with this money as these breakages occur.
Yes.
And with the lifespan being overdone at this point, it's better to stop putting stuff off because we don't really have a choice anymore. So the debt, even though it is a debt, and the word debt, is going to be more beneficial for us in the long run than having to come up with 10 million right off the bat when needed in order to fix an entire school.
Yeah.
Anything else? Great points made by everybody. So thank you so much for this discussion. Thank you, Mrs. Polashak. And we need to vote on number eight. So Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Ms. Zich.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dadd.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. Cooper, could you please read the instruction report?
Yes.
I have a lot. I'll, I'll be moving on 16. If it's on my turn, I should have taken a drink. All right. Number one is to ratify the sub-grant agreement as attached for the implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Section 619, between the school district and Allegheny Intermediate Unit, number three, for the period of July 1, '25 through June 30, '26, and authorize the execution by the superintendent. This is a renewal of services. Number two is to ratify the Education Master Services Agreement as attached between the school district and Emerges Healthcare Staffing, Inc., to provide supplemental healthcare staff to the district effective June 25, '25. This is a renewal of services. Number three is to ratify the agreement between the school district and LearnWell for tutoring services effective July 1, '25 through June 30, '26. The cost is stated in Exhibit A. This is a renewal of services. Number four is to ratify the school district letter of agreement as attached between the school district and the Alliance for Refugee Youth Support and Education to collaborate through information and data sharing in relation to students from the district who are enrolled in the Refugee School Impact Grant Program. This is a new letter of agreement and there is no cost to the district. Number five, approve the agreement as attached between the district and Wesley Family Services for Child Adolescent Partial Hospitalization Program Services for the twenty-five twenty-six school year. This is a renewal of services. Number six, to approve addendum number eight as attached pursuant to the contractual agreement approved August fourteenth twenty-seventeen between the school district and Presley Ridge Otisum for services to students for the twenty-five twenty-six school year. Also a renewal. Number seven, approve the day student education agreement as attached between the school district and Glade Run Lutheran Services, um Saint Stevens Lutheran Academy and Saint Stevens Academy Utica for services to students for twenty-five twenty-six. This is a renewal of services. Number eight, agree, approve the agreement as attached between the school district and Phase Four Learning Center, Inc. for alternate, alternative education services for students for the twenty-five twenty-six school year. This is a renewal of services. Number nine, approve the outreach services contract agreement as attached between the school district and the Western Pennsylvania School for the Blind for services to students effective August thirtieth twenty-five through August twenty-nine twenty-six. This is a renewal of services. Number ten, approve the software license agreement as attached between the school district and Linkit. There's an exclamation point, all right, for the district to continue the pilot of the instructional management system that Linkit uh provides effective for the twenty-five twenty-six school year. This is a renewal of services. Number eleven, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine as attached in support of military-connected students and their families. Number twelve, approve the agreement as attached between the school district and the Bradley Center for educational services for students for the twenty-five twenty-six school year. This is a renewal of services. Number thirteen, approve the letter of agreement as attached between the school district and the Watson Institute for Students Enrolled in the Education Center Swickly for the twenty-five twenty-six school year begin, beginning August twenty-one twenty-five, and authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement. Also a renewal of services. Number fourteen is to approve a letter of agreement between the district and the Watson Institute for Students Enrolled in the Watson Institute Social Center for Academic Achievement in Charpsburg for the twenty-five twenty-six school year, which begins August twenty-first. This is a renewal. Number fifteen, approve the service agreement as attached between the school district and Allegheny Adult and Pediatric Therapy LLC for staff professional development, classroom planning, observation, and direct consultation services effective August twenty-first twenty-five through July thirty-one twenty-six. This is also a renewal. And finally, number sixteen, approve the letter of agreement as attached between the school district and the Human Services Administration Organization to provide student assistant program services for the twenty-five twenty-six school year. This is a renewal of services and is funded by the Allegheny County Office of Behavioral Health. I move on to sixteen items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items?
For our software license agreements, do we sort of review those to make sure that the privacy protections for students in the original contract still uphold on the renewal?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, we do review.
Okay. Mrs. Anusik, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Ms. Zitch.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Frank, legislation and policy.
No actions requested tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Ms. Zitch, would you please read the personnel report?
Yes, I will be, I am moving on the following eight items. Item one, resignations, ancillary services. The resignation of George J. Cavish, facility shift supervisor at the Fox Chapel area high school due to personal reasons. For educational support, the resignation of Saint Clara O. Oliver, instructional assistant at Dorseyville Middle School due to personal reasons. Resignation of Grace E. Shelley, her personal care assistant at Hartwood Elementary School due to personal reasons. Custodial maintenance, the resignation of Rosemarie Dreslinski, twelve-month, eight-hour-per-day custodian at O'Hara Elementary School. The resignation of Thomas F. Hartman, twelve-month, eight-hour-per-day custodian at Dorseyville Middle School. Food services, the resignation of Sandra M. Nowick, food services worker at O'Hara Elementary School for supplemental contracts athletic. The resignation of Emily Grakowski, soccer boys' high school assistant due to personal reasons. Resignation of Amanda Kalin, basketball girls' high school first assistant due to personal reasons. Matthew M. Matthew R. McClair, swimming high school head due to personal reasons. Rachel Rainey, basketball girls' program development assistant at Dorseyville Middle School due to personal reasons. The resignation of Bruce Valinsky, basketball boys' freshman head due to personal reasons. For supplemental contracts non-athletic, the resignation of Jessica L. Resec, Resec, best monitor number five at O'Hara due to personal reasons. For the extended school year program, the resignation of Grace E. Shelley, half-day paraprofessional for the Fox Chapel area school district E.S.Y. program due to personal reasons. Uh item number two, appointments professional. Anthony M. DeMarco is approved as a physical education teacher at Fox Chapel area high school, available due to the retirement of Todd Masick. Educational support, Cassandra M. Carlick is approved as a personal care assistant at Fairview Elementary School. For ancillary ser- services, Daniel N. Anthony is approved as a facility shift supervisor for Fox Chapel area school district. Custodial maintenance, Caesar A. Febraro is approved as a ten-month, eight-hour-per-day custodial employee for Fox Chapel area school district for probationary period. Food services, Amber Eddy is approved as a permanent part-time food service employee at Dorseyville Middle School Cafeteria. Amanda L. Ramirez is approved as a permanent part-time food services employee at the Fairview, at Fairview Elementary Cafeteria. Supplemental contracts athletic, the following athletic supplemental contracts are ratified. Jeremy Bennett, basketball boys freshman head. Kevin McCarny, soccer boys' high school assistant. Brad Lewis, golf girls, JV head. The following athletic supplemental contract is approved also. Katie Alteiri, Alteiri, intramural basketball girls at Hartwood. And um athletic supplemental contracts for the spring season and the high school faculty manager for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year are ratified and approved as attached. Item three, replacement professional. Samantha M. Diamond, elementary teacher at O'Hara Elementary School is approved for a child-rearing adoption leave extension. Heather R. Fontana, elementary teacher at Fairview Elementary School is approved for a first semester medical sabbatical. For leave replacements professional, Julia G. Arlia is approved as a leave replacement elementary teacher at O'Hara Elementary School due to the retire, due to increased enrollment, excuse me. Maria L. Seema is approved as a leave replacement elementary teacher at Fairview Elementary School, available due to increased enrollment. Joshua D. Mariana is approved as a leave replacement elementary teacher at Kerr Elementary School. This position is available due to the child-rearing adoption leave of Carla Zlatos. Megan E. Silva is approved as a first semester leave replacement elementary teacher at O'Hara Elementary School due to avail, due to the child-rearing adoption leave extension for Samantha Diamond. Taylor R. Tressati is approved as a first semester leave replacement elementary teacher at Fairview Elementary School due to the medical sabbatical of Heather Fontana. Kayla M. Wies is approved as a leave replacement elementary teacher at Kerr Elementary School due to the educational sabbatical of Tiffany Hess. I believe that's Wise, sorry. Item five, services agreement, middle school athletic trainer. The service agreement for middle school athletic trainer between Fox Chapel area school district and Keith Course is ratified and approved as attached. Professional employee assignments, the professional employee assignments for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school term are approved as attached. Item seven, summer programs twenty twenty-five, middle school. Anthony M. DeMarco is ratified as an instructor for the DMS Summer Learning Academy. For STEAM camp, Clara Barnes is ratified as an instructional assistant for the STEAM camp at Fairview Elementary School. Audrey Irving is ratified as an instructor for the STEAM camp at Fairview Elementary School. Danell Steiner is ratified as instructor for the STEAM camp at Fairview Elementary School. Volunteer athletic. Item eight, the following athletic volunteers ratified. Emily Grakowski for Bowie Soccer High School. The following athletic volunteer is also ratified. Jeannie Kirk for field hockey in high school. I move on these eight items.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items?
Just like to welcome so many new teachers. I'm excited that our enrollment is up. I'm I'm even more excited that we're staffed for it.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions?
Are there any, um, I saw there, you know, resignations and 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 also hires. I I just wanted to know, are there any open positions still that need to be filled?
There are some open positions. I'll let Mr. or I'll let Dr. McCollum talk because we have a couple in a couple of different places, so.
Okay.
Yes, all of our elementary positions, we, we'll have one more name we'll be bringing to the board to be ratified in September to fill that position. We did have an unexpected leave at Dorseyville Middle School for mathematics that a contracted position that we are in the process of trying to find. Just going through the screening and and site process. And then also at the high school, we have several leave replacements in mathematics. We're still working on filling those as far as, that's professional staff, support staff. We are still looking for uh two support secretarial staff. We have been, we've had that posted and been going through the process of interviewing and 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 so forth. Mentioned the bus drivers. We are still six short. And custodians, we are actually fully staffed with custodians at this moment in time.
Yay, wow.
Athletics?
Athletics, as far as the open coaching positions. Well, we have a number here this evening that, you know, Mr. O'Brien has start, has posted and started going through the process. So uh none of those have been filled that that we've had the most recent resignations at this time.
How many, approximately how many open positions are those?
Um, I'm guessing.
I I put you on the spot.
That's okay, no problem.
Any other questions? Mrs. Anusik, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes.
Ms. Zitch.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Dad.
Yes.
Ms. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I also have one more personal and personnel information item, not a personal information, personnel information item. It requires no action for tenure information. The following employees are eligible for a professional employees contract or tenure effective August fifteenth. That's Michaela DeFrancesca, Rebecca Grisbeck, Lindsay Norman, Sarah Petro, and Julia Prokopik. So congratulations to all of those. Thank you for staying with us.
Thank you. Mr. Good, operations and cooperative services.
No action is requested at this time.
Okay, it's time for our second public comment. Nobody is signed up. Our Fox Chapel Educators Association, Mrs. Macken.
I was trying to come up quickly. This was a nice, long back-to-school meeting. But very informative.
But we have music.
That was a highlight. First off, uh we just wanted, uh on behalf of the educators in the association, we're really excited to welcome our students back. We are also very hopeful that everyone will be able to get into Hartwood to prepare, um to welcome the students. We also are very appreciative of Dr. Reljack, um in addition to being the recipient of the reflective leadership award. I think in working with you closely through COVID, through the contract process, I think it's inspiring for educators to know that you're always asking what's next and how are we gonna continue to move the district forward? So that's exciting as we move forward. With that being said, also wanna thank Dan Breckwrights and all of our ancillary staff, our custodial staff, our maintenance staff because they work so hard year-round, as you can tell also with just the maintenance of those boilers. But also in getting the schools ready for us to return and making sure that they are safe and uh ready for all of our students. And with that being said, while it was a long presentation or two between the facility assessment plan and the bond resolution, we are really appreciative of all the work that you are all doing to plan for the future, to plan for not only safe buildings, but to plan for a future that's feasible for all the residents of our district. And finally, oh yeah, and one more thing. We also are really appreciative of all the efforts, especially that Matt and Ashley and all the teachers made with the summer programs. But it's really exciting to see the work that the district is doing to support our refugee population. And having uh our district actively partner with Arise is so exciting because those needs are, you know, really a lot. And it's all hands-on in the district to support the kids, but really appreciate all of the support that you guys give as well. So with that, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, it is time for board comments. I first would like to say that our hearts go out to those in the Mon Valley and what's happened today in Clerton. And uh we, our thoughts and prayers are with everyone at the U.S. Steel Plant there. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Reljack on her award. It is well-deserved. Um and I'm glad we got to talk about it tonight. And I look forward to the new school year. And uh good luck to all the teachers and staff and administrators and our facilities people to keep it all going. We hope you have a great year. I look forward to being at opening day on Friday. All right, Mr. Frank.
I echo the same thing. Welcome back to the students. Welcome back to the staff, especially the new teachers. And uh thank you to the custodial staff who I've seen working hard all summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Finley.
Congratulations, Dr. Reljack. Congratulations, Bonnie and Jill in back. As always, you work very hard, ladies. Thank you so much for all you do and you get a clap for all that. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Students, welcome back. New teachers, teachers who have been with us, thank you so much for staying. Thank you for coming, all of you. And enjoy the next ten days.
Dr. Hasselcorn.
Yes, there's nothing like the first day of school. It's my favorite day of the year as a former educator. So I hope everyone enjoys that and has a great school year.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton.
I'd just like to congratulate the facilities, maintenance, and building teams on the glowing review you got from Cyclone. Uh that was um very notable, obviously, well-deserved. Over the years of being on project and planning and being um on this board, I've grown a a great appreciation for what it takes to keep all of our buildings running and all of the crises that have been managed and averted or narrowly averted or just handled that make it possible for us to be here making this decision about bonds and capital planning now without being completely in a crisis mode because a lot of those systems really do, are past their their prime by far. And it's only you guys who keep, keep, keep it going, keep being in crisis every day. So uh thank you and congratulations on that praise because that was independent and not solicited.
Thank you. Uh Mrs. Cooper.
I was thinking during this whole discussion that a lot of the community doesn't understand our real facility needs. It's a testament to the work of Mr. Breckwrights and his staff and the administration really like keeping it completely behind the scenes on the down-low pretty much and just, uh, you know, MacGyver-ing things together or whatever you do, duct tape, I don't know. But that most of the community wouldn't realize, like, the real needs we have to replace some big things. So I think that's a big testimony in itself. As a parent and non-educator, it is also the most wonderful time of the year. And thank you for all your preparation. I look forward to sending my children back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Zitch.
Yes, I'm also arriving here at the, in a place of gratitude. I just wanna say, um, I appreciate that we talk nitty-gritty about finance and building infrastructure and that not all boards have that capacity, so thank you all. And thanks also to the admin who put up with our endless questions and our contractors, et cetera. So um that really meant, that really means a lot. And I will note that I was at a five-year-old's birthday party this weekend with a bunch of pre-K kids and all these moms who are getting enrolled and learning how to do stuff. And one of them was like, how does Jill respond to emails so quickly? What does she do? And someone was like, I don't know, and I keep getting all of these like fancy mailings, like newsletters now from this lady Bonnie. And it's like, and I was like, yeah, you guys are doing it. You're the talk of the town. And the the families that are coming into our district feel that. Like, that's really incredible. And that was total, again, totally unsolicited, but like, great work. And congratulations, Dr. Reljack.
Thank you. Mr. Good.
It's great to start a new school year. I just re- reflect on all of the efforts that happen in front and behind the scenes to uh put all the kids first and do everything uh that we need to uh for them, so I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.